We told them not to come back because she's better. We really don't want them. We had this in the city hall today. The APLAC ladies came today to see if they had any employees that needed to make adjustments in their plans. They've been on board with this for quite some time. They made their annual visit today to allow employees to make any new choices. I'm not aware of how that went. I'm not associated with the APLAC group, but we have several employees who chose to take some of their beneficial plans. Got a few things we want to talk about today and opened up the miscellaneous and we have some additional time. Air Vac, we call it Air Vac. I think it's actually got a new name since they've merged with some companies, but it's a contract we've had for our citizens for several years. It's coming up. I believe the actual due date on it's around the first of March, maybe the third of March, Amy said. But would have to vote to extend this contract and pay that bill probably by the end of this month. And that total is $21,855. That covers any citizen that lives in the city limits of Hamilton. For additional $35 per family, I believe you can get extended coverage to go outside of the city when you have an Air Vac lift, maybe anywhere that you are in the country. There's a minor fee for each family if you want to have extended coverage. But they're not offering this to cities anymore, so if we don't renew our contract, we wouldn't be able to come back later and ask for it back. So we need to be sure that we keep it, in my opinion. Of course, we'll bring that to a vote at a meeting soon. Not sure if they'll be on the Monday night agenda. Going to address it Monday night? We will.
Tuesday night.
Pay at the due date.
Tuesday night?
Tuesday night. Excuse me. That is a Monday holiday.
Yeah.
Total holiday. Tuesday night, we did move that meeting. Okay. Thank you for the correction. So we probably need to attend to that business Tuesday night. We are going to need to post a job at the recreation center. Tim Kerr and I talked this morning. He's doing a job description to go with that job and he's working on the fine tuning job description. And the new hire would be under that job description and he was going to give each of you a copy of that to review. And we'll consider that in our hiring of replacing employee at the rec center.
Let me, is this going to be a new employee?
Replacing one.
Okay. What else would that mean?
It's, it's just...
Who is retiring? What's the, what's the job going to be?
It'll be probably a programs assist or something in that nature. I'm not, it won't be a technician or operator, you know, machine operator most likely. It'll be somebody directly involved with the youth programs.
Well, before, I really, before, I guess everybody feels the same way I do, before we start talking about hiring somebody and recommending somebody, I'd want to know what that job's going to be because most of us know everybody at some time. If it might be, you know, very suitable for the job than somebody else. If we had two or three, one of them might be, could do the job better than somebody else for certain jobs. So before, I'd like to know exactly.
Well, every person will be entitled to, um, employing the opportunity and will be given an opportunity to apply for that job. Then they'll be screened for the needs and that kind of thing before any hiring's done, of course. And all that procedure will be followed closely. But I can see a good point in your concerns, Jean. But we'll make sure that we have a good understanding about that and a person that very suitable for that position. We have Tim here with us. He had put in his budget for a firefighter's job for this coming year and we want to talk about that today and want Tim to explain how this will help his department, how some areas, some shortfalls he has now. And we've discussed it briefly, but I like to hear the story straight from Tim. Well, whatever, give you some time to talk to the council today about this.
It's, uh, we've still got one shift that's not covered. Took with two people. We're covering it with part-time people and we try to keep two there at night all the time as far as all the runs and stuff go, not let them go out on the runs by themselves. We still got one shift that's still covered with part-time people. That's getting to be, I think, when I just was told, just a little bit of guys on the part-time fixing to be leaving. Got to leave this for one. And they got to be certified to work. It's where the, where the holdup is. We can't just go get somebody off the street and throw them in there and turn them loose and get us. And this will give us two on the shift. The school that they normally go to in the Muscle Shoals, I was in a meeting last week. They're just about full. It started, we've been, the other schools have been, we've been having to get out and recruit people to go up there. Now, he's told me that he's got maybe one or two spots left open. Clark's fixing an R10, they're having a big car up in North Alabama. He said he couldn't hold a spot, but we got to get some registered and I knew what the process is. It's two months, two weeks, a month out before we can ever do anything. So I wanted to get the process started at least so we can try to get them in that school and Muscle Shoals instead of trying to send somebody to Tuscaloosa.
Have you got somebody in mind?
Well, no, not mine. Would have to take some applications.
Oh, okay.
And then they have to pass the...
CPAT and that's...
Yeah.
There's a lot, there's a lot before, there's a lot to go on before any hiring's done.
Well, what do you, do we, do we have to do something now before you start trying to get somebody?
Well, you'd have to open it up. Opening up the job opening.
Okay.
I would have to have y'all permission to move forward against what kind of say.
I might motion we move forward then.
We'll have to do it.
Hold that motion for Monday night.
Hold that motion, Jean. But I just wanted you to be aware because this is...
I'm fifty-five years old and I can't remember.
But you're still older than me.
The, the job posting and the employment applications need to be allowed by us at the next meeting so that he can move forward. He's got a deadline to meet or we'll probably have to send the person to the academy in Tuscaloosa where that comes motel bills and extra expenses of them being out of town.
But I'd like to get the process started because it is a long process.
Most of our guys go and come to this academy in Muscle Shoals. It's an easier drive for them, so it helps us not bear as much expense in getting our personnel trained. Tim, we appreciate you coming today and explaining your need and we'll try to act on that for you Monday night. If anyone should want to talk to Tim, uh, more in detail, just give him a call.
Come by and see you.
He's available. Go by and visit with him for that matter.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And we, uh, we have a job opportunity at the library. It's a part-time job. That was in Star's budget for this year and we'll be ready to act on that Monday night. It's Tuesday night also. I'll get this right in a little bit. But we already have applications for this position and we'll be doing some fine tuning on that, some screening and what have you. We'll be looking to maybe announce hiring Monday night, a part-time worker for the library. Angela had mentioned that with the upcoming elections and new administration for the next four years happening this summer, that this would be the proper time to address whether or not there'd be any fee changes or schedule changes in the pay for the mayor and the council for the following administration. It wouldn't affect this administration, but would become effective when the new administration is sworn in in November of 2020. This is a yes or no. This is for discussion. I have no recommendations on this matter. It's just open for discussion to you all if you want to talk about it today. Current mayor's salary is $35,000 a year. Current council fees, of course, is $500 per month or per, yeah, per month. I don't know how that compares to cities the size of Hamilton. I haven't done a survey. As a matter of fact, we just talked about this yesterday and I thought Angela would be here and would have more information for us, but she wasn't able to come today. Y'all want to think about that? It doesn't have to be decided today. If you want to think about it, give mine, and if you want to bring it back up to discussion at any other time, if you think...
The mayor's salary is just $35,000 a year?
Yes.
I don't know where I got that figured. I told you it's more than that. What was it we were talking about after we reached range of water?
Yeah, water.
Yeah. We need to, we need to get back on this. We talked about it one time in addition to the water rate.
Yeah. Well, Alan, uh, Alan Cantrell and Rodney are finding out our cost of production per thousand gallons and right now things aren't good for Alan. He's hasn't had a tragedy in his family this past week and so he couldn't be with us today, but we're trying to line him up for the next work session to discuss what it really costs the city to produce our water. And he's doing an analysis on that for us and almost finished with it as a matter of fact. He's doing some work on our wastewater deals too.
Yeah, and we talked about it the last time we were losing money, huh?
Yeah, we are.
And we can't, that's it.
Last week, we gave $36,000 more dollars to the water department in addition to what I mentioned to you.
And that would clear the impact for that. That's a lot of money to be this...
So the costs of operations have gone up and even though the bond payment that used to be billed to the water department has gone away, there's still lots of expense in running purification and wastewater treatment plants and of course maintaining lines and everything has just gone up. We got a call from Wes Speller. Rodney and I met with him and Phil Pugh there in front of your house. When he beeped at us, we're looking at that problem. There's wastewater and sewer running out of that ground there in the middle of the highway. And now the highways begin to sink there around that area where it runs out. We're having to get a camera brought from Birmingham to go inside that line and see where that water's getting in. It's a lot of surface water that's getting in our sewer line and it's boiling it out in the highway. And it's, it's a problem. It's, it's going to become a large problem because it's undermining the highway there. And that's got to be addressed. He was wanting to know if we had a plan because they've promised to help us with the asphalt part if we can get the sewer line remedied. And fortunately, those lines are not real deep right there, so we can get into them, but we don't know how much of the highway. We've got to do good to find the problem. We're trying to do it with a camera. And there's some people that bring their cameras and go inside that line and look for holes or leakage, one or the other. Something's causing a lot of surface water to come in there. Once it boils out in the highway, it's going back in a storm drain for the most part, but it's undermining the road itself. That's the problem we're faced with. We get rid of the water for the, most of the water is not sewer. Most of it's surface drainage water, but we're trying to remedy the entire problem. Rodney's got, with people that have the camera and they're supposed to come one day next week and try to help us solve that particular problem. These big rains like we're having just overwhelm almost everything. We just had a road washed in two not before last. I was with Janice Clark's and Clark Brant's washed away an eighty inch line. They repaired the line, but couldn't get enough compaction on the road. When the next big rain came, it blew the road and took half of it out. So it's too dangerous to leave open, so it's closed right now. The street department's going over there working all day and they're going to take about two more days to repair that road and get that covered back in. It's just some things we're faced with. The rains seem to be more intense than they've been in a while. Think about the matter we talked there as to whether or not you'll want to address, address that. And that's just something that she said we would have to cover before the next election and this would be the proper time to address it on compensation for the council and the mayor. Angela and I reviewed our renewal proposal for our package insurance yesterday with Ricky Sims and Matt Sims. The annual premiums went up about $7,000 from last year. The new package total including liability, everything but workers' comp is in this. $152,822 is our package proposal from your insurance center. And I'll let anybody that needs a copy of this review, get Amy to make them a photocopy of this package. We have a liability insurance that is based off of $2 million. There's an aggregate limit of three, $3 million, $2 million for several different incidents. And I think in one case, the aggregate of all could be around $4 million if certain incidents happen in a certain way. So we've got a good bit of liability insurance for allowances that may come up, but it's hard to have too much insurance. I've asked Ricky to go back to the rec center, but they had it valued at $3,000,331,000. And I asked, I said, "We just spent $3 million renovating. It's got to be worth more than $3 million." So he was going to go yesterday and take them out and they're going to look at the building, get the dimensions of it and do a new valuation on that. I told him we wouldn't be interested in having a commercial appraisal done on it, but they've got some rule books for insurance matters that they follow. He might be changing that number a bit as what they have it now. Just to give you an idea of what the premium total is for a building like that and contents, it's $4,002 a year to ensure three, $3 million coverage. And if it were to go to four and a half or five million, probably wouldn't be over $5,000. So I, I think it might be worthy of adding a little bit of value to that in case we have fire or something. I think the building will withstand a lot of wind. I think wind is not our big worry. An outbreak of a fire or something, I think, could do a lot of damage to the building, but I don't think wind is going to be our culprit that would destroy that building. It takes some unbelievable wind, I think, to blow that building away. It's very strong.
I think you need five million to cover it. If it's still over there, you're not good enough at it.
He was going, he was going to go back and look at it and probably make some adjustments. If anybody needs a copy of our insurance proposal, you're welcome to get you a copy of that. Had a call today from Tyler Knight. He is looking to build a building and he said personally financed. I don't know if he's got partners in this or if he's going to do it. And it's for special training for school students only. Children that are joining programs in Birmingham and Tupelo and outline areas, if they're wanting to do workout training, special training, if they're going to specialize in travel ball, he'll be providing them a place to train and this kind of thing. Some of it will have astroturf on it, some of it will have half gym for basketball and have weight training, all this stuff. While he's asking the city to participate in, he would like to have one acre of land from the city, somewhere in the city, to build this building on. And I told him I didn't know what the possibilities are. I haven't talked to Sky Hunt to see if it's even allowable, but he's asked the city to provide an acre of land and he'll do all the building and parking lots and this kind of thing according to what he told me today. And this is for students only, not older kids. It's for students that are trying to get into these travel ball programs and things like that or that are having to go off somewhere to do their specialized training. He's got in mind to bring all these children back to a training center here where they can get their training.
Would it only be Hamilton students or would it be the area?
That is a good question. I'm not sure, I know it's just school students, but I don't know the answer to that one. It's a good question. But he had suggested today that he had driven by the Munson Wire property. He'd like to go to one side of it and have an acre that he could put a building on out of that property. That's the land he'd suggested. I just told him that we'd be meeting and that I'd bring it up to you guys and let you think about it. And if any of you want to make contact with him and get more of his plan, we were just on phone conversation today. It was very, it was kind of brief, but at any rate, he was asking for the city to get involved if we had any land that we could let him have to build. He said as close to the school as possible where the kids could leave school in the evening and come directly to his center or the center he's going to provide. I don't know who the trainers will be. I guess there'll be someone that's good at baseball, someone that's good at basketball, whatever training they're needing. I don't know that he'll be the trainer, but he's going to have some trainers available as I understand it in that facility. But he's asking the city to participate with him since he's bringing this to students here. And I just told him that I didn't know what the possibilities were, but he talked about it. And he wouldn't mind any one of you giving him a call or talking to him one-on-one about this and so we all have a good understanding. As I say, I don't know about legality of it. I'd have to run that with Scott to get some advice as to whether or not we can even do this. It's just, he was, he was actually exploring, I think, today more than anything. And of course, it was a cold call for me. I didn't know the center was even being proposed. It's a 60 by 80 building according to, you know, these 60s with 18-foot sidewalls, which is a pair-sized building.
Towel is what?
18-foot high.
Sounds like it might be similar to the one they got at Phil Campbell. They've got like an indoor practice place and...
They said a lot of cities are getting these and he wants to provide one for our kids here. He said rather than involving and wanting advanced abilities by doing special training and, and I said, "It sounds good. I just, I don't know a lot about it," but I was willing to put it on the table to you guys and let you hear what his, sort of what his plan was. What's the guy's name? Tyler Knight.
Tyler Knight. He lived with us here. He had a lot of work to do.
Yeah, they have a pharmacy lease in Keith's kitchens. Keith's kitchens, and I can't hardly say that first word. What's the name of it, Scott? Can you say it for me?
It's just Kit.
Okay, Keith's kitchens. That's his, his company that he affiliates with and his wife has a pharmacy in South Hamilton.
They can get an acre over there that they want to sale next to the rec center. Be a good place. I wonder if so, if they can get over there.
I guess what he's going to be doing is really can't be handled at the rec center. I thought about that earlier because we've got a rec center here in Hamilton, but I think what he's going to be doing is providing advanced training for these kids that want to specialize in a sport or build themselves up, become more physically able when they're in high school. There'll be a lot of weight training, things like that. It's not offered now professionally and it'll make these kids stronger when they're ready to play high school ball and this kind of thing. But at any rate, that's, that was his goal and he's looking for an acre of land to put this building on. He said, "I don't currently have that acre of land. I'd like to get one if the city has one available to put this building on since I'm going to be providing a service." And he said, "I'm providing the building." I don't know, see an associate or, he said, "We've been talking about this." And I think he's consulted some other people, but they've got the building worked out and they've found a spot to put it on.
I think we oughta, we got land over there, plenty of it over there on one side. You know, you know, give them a place to build that on because it's a good thing for the kids, though, he's got them out there.
It's something we currently do not have and, uh, so far as I know, uh, there'd not be any exclusions, you know. I imagine the parents, of course, would sponsor this child into these programs, but, uh, it's something they could get here instead of going out of town for it.
We've got quite a few acres there, a little bunch of them, I was in there.
Forty-seven.
We don't need to put it down in the middle of it or anything. Over on one side or something, it wouldn't make, wouldn't hurt anything.
Put a big heart out of it and maybe keep it located so it don't interfere with other plans you might have for the rest of the park. Well, let's think about that and, and I'll try to get more information if y'all are interested. And I'll find out from Scott if it's something the city can do and then we decide if it's something we wanna do inclusively and, you know, about majority, uh, vote and that kind of thing. And, uh, we might even want, if y'all want to get involved, we might wanna get him to come and present his plan to all of us. And y'all wouldn't be here at second hand. I kinda like one of these things to be delivered by the individual at the lead, you know. That way there's no, no way that it's misinterpreted or misunderstood.
Yeah, I mean, probably, but he didn't contract with him if you, they put that on before the kids had found it to be done. But he'll, he decided not to do that and it didn't work out and closed it down. He paid so much for the acre of land to, to this building on it, so the building would go to the city.
Those, by any means like that are important for this, you know.
Let it go back to him.
Yes.
The building go to it, so with the land.
Those are, those are good points and discussion like this makes it more doable because we, we're thinking through it. Just to do something because we're asked to do it is, I think it's a worthy cause, first of all.
I do too. That's for the taxpayers. I, we, we should protect their money and land too.
Sure, that's...
This would, that's what he's wanting to do and we did that, we're protected and he's got the land.
Yeah. Well, this is something that we'll explore and see if it's, uh, doable first of all. And then I may wanna invite him to our next work day and, and have him explain exactly where he's going with this, what he wants to do and how we could get into the scheme of things if we can participate. We might need to have a special meeting, uh, very soon. We've had someone in our industrial part recent times, uh, looking to move here with a plant. And, uh, we've, uh, I've been talking with, uh, folks at C3. I've talked to Scott. If this thing keeps moving forward, we're gonna have to decide what we can do and the way to help this company get here. They're a Japanese firm. They're looking for about twenty acres of an industrial park. They're in the car business, they're, they're a hub of the car business. I'm just beginning to get this thing motivated. I can't make an announcement here at this table today, but I'm just saying, we're probably gonna have to be called together, to meet, uh, Scott and, uh, and hear the proposal, uh, that comes through C3 and, and see if we can entertain this company's, uh, moving here. And they're, uh, they're talking possibly part manufacturing and part distribution. So we're, we're hoping that this pans out. And I have found out that my flat is not a company, they're an established company. Already, uh, pretty wide open in Birmingham area. But they, they're looking to get more in the hub of the auto industry. But they're like, this is, the seeds expired in Hamilton and so...
And that's what we need, that's what we need.
Jobs.
Hmm. So we pay a job.
Just wanna put y'all on notice that I may have to have a special meeting for this. Depends on how it develops. This has started before New Year's, there's more talk ongoing and it's, it's, it's coming down to a point, I think that we're gonna have to lay a proposal on the table for these people to see if they'll, uh, accept it or not. One thing that I liked that was said, when they started to leave our industrial park, one of the guys looked at the other one and said, "We found our new headquarters." So I like that kind of talk.
It'd be a big thing to happen if we could get that, that would be what we've been needing for a long time.
Maybe they've got bodies.
What they always do. Yeah, they, they usually allow a planted one.
They just give them parts.
They're laying down there too. They do something with their laying down.
In, in December, I heard from a, a company in Huntsville. And they're also targeting Hamilton for an expansion. They said they're out of employees in Huntsville. They want to target Hamilton for a plant. About two hundred people would be involved and working for them. So I'm supposed to meet with them for a month's out. I've got, um, TM's name and company name. I've gone online to check them out and they're, they have a spot running on the industrial site for Huntsville. They work about six hundred and fifty people there, but he said there's nobody in Huntsville that he can hire anymore. That they're out of them, they're out of personnel, they don't have any workers. So we've got two chances here and we're gonna try to make both of them work. But, uh, I just wanna keep y'all kinda informed. But neither of these, there's this announcement today that wants you to know we're working towards a new industry.
We're talking more about our tire company. We went to say that day. They go down over. Run a map or something. I know. What do you call it, the Kater?
The Kager, yeah.
Kater, what?
Uh, Wilks. They, uh, they know that this Loves is gonna have a tire service and a twenty-four hour service center with it. Like, back to they, once they figure it out, that they're gonna be selling tires right across the street from them and working the interstate twenty-four seven. Loves is bringing a full service with their, uh, their organization. Tire and road service. And that's to start March twenty-first, I got a starting date on it.
Loves is...
Yes. Today, I got a call from, uh, the, uh, new store that's coming in to replace Goodies. They'd like to have us at a ribbon cutting with them on March the seventeenth at nine AM. And they're happy to be coming to Hamilton and, uh, they think it's gonna be a good location for them.
Where are they going?
They're going in that store that Goodies fifteen hundred.
Oh, down here.
Yeah, Suite B, Suite B, I believe is the, Suite, it's fifteen hundred Military Street South is their address.
Which is in that shop.
Yeah.
Right, uh, what is it though?
It's GORD. Yeah, yeah.
How you spell it?
G O D, G O R D M A N S.
Gordons.
Oh, Gordons, okay.
And, uh, they, they sell a variety of things and they, they seem excited about coming to Hamilton. And I, I, uh, actually, they may be a little more diverse in what they do than Goodies are.
Isn't it part of Goodies? It's just like a, a bigger branded store of?
I think, I think you can buy more things in there than you can in this.
I, I thought I saw something on the internet where they were talking about they were changing some of their Goodie stores to this thing.
What type, what type of industry is that Huntsville company? What type of industry is that Huntsville company in?
They're, they're a sewing operation.
Sewing?
With government contracts, as I always say. And they don't, they don't build anything that's not super strong, like Fair Trooper, uh, harness and, uh, climbers harness or climbing poles, firefighter packs, belts, federal firefighters, this kind of stuff. They're in the, uh, super, um, strong products. Everything they do is a government order kind of thing. I was trying to mention something else. That's two seconds ago. Oh, this contract with Airbag, I think, is most, most important, that we handle that promptly and don't let it ever expire. I, I think if it ever expires, we'll be, it'll be lost forever. You guys got anything you wanna discuss or talk about secondly?
I had a person ask me today if we would put Grandview Drive on the list to be paved next time there's funds available.
It's one of our, it's one of our longer streets and...
Not too well, aren't they, yeah?
It, it's probably, uh, it's probably, I think it was forty-something years since they've even had crushed stone and tar. But it still didn't level the road, Tammy, is the problem. It's, it's movements, cars move, uh...
Got a deep dip right after you turn on forty-three.
Yeah.
With the ride.
Yeah, um, I would love to see that road without asphalt. It's a cut through though, a lot of people use it, it's a handy road for people. And with that new bridge over there, I mean, it just makes it safer. And this road really needs to be considered.
I noticed they started on their housing authority construction today. There was, I say day, it's the first time I've heard of it.
Yeah. There's supposed to be, uh, three crews moving in at the same time. Rodney said that job should really move quickly once they get into it.
If they got the street blocked, it goes into it.
You know, that's gonna be a nice project that we're doing over there for those people.
What roads have been paved thus far?
Uh, seven, uh... This road between forty-three and Steel Street, we got it. And we got, uh, Second Avenue, Third Street. We got the loop down there by what the station and back to the housing authority buildings over there. I think it's a total of six streets that we did.
They're all done?
They're done.
And I had somebody ask me, did they address the, uh, springs under this street before they paved? Or did they use the, the weeping asphalt so they aren't gonna undermine or what about, how was that handled?
They tried to address it. I don't know if they did a great job of it, but they recognized that they wanted it there before they started the project. And, um, Mike and I talked about it. Uh, no, Rodney and I talked about it. Rodney thinks we've conquered part of water. I don't know if we did a hundred percent and everything, I don't know. But that was addressed and I, I don't, I hope they get it, handle it.
They're gonna come back strapping streets now? Have you paved streets?
Uh, pretty much, I think that'll, that may fall on us, I'm not sure. They did this one over here, but I'm not sure we'll get strapping on there.
Is what we're using part of the tax money for?
We voted to do the strapping with our tax money.
Yeah, I think it should be, it was, they look like they did a really good job and if they're strapped, it'll look like, it'll look a lot better.
Heard a lot of comments on, about doing a good job.
Yeah, yeah, they kind of do.
I had, I had a lady call me, um, this past week and she doesn't have very good vision, but she's still allowed to drive. She said, "Strapping helps her so much." She said, "I can tell where I am on the road without worrying about beating somebody else's path." She said, "Strapping is what I depend on when I'm driving."
Well, I take all those things, I do, I know. I haven't known the ride, anyway.
Uh, we've got a few streets that, that would not have a, a little bit of a problem putting a center line in, but there's a lot of our streets that traffic moves pretty fast on them. And I, I believe in strapping myself and all of them that we can strap, I think we should.
But most of these streets are city streets, like, it, they're narrow. And, and they really need the strapping so people can see where to stay on.
I agree.
The right side of the road, they're not, don't have the, on the side, coming out that extra two or three feet and so they're narrow.
Seventh is bad that way? When you come out where they, where they had to put the covert in, you come up that hill? You still got little drop-offs on both sides.
Yeah, that, uh, that happen will give you, or stay anyway there.
Mike's real concerned about the road that goes across Rabbit Hill. I can't remember the lane. He said it's only, he's already got it on this twenty-twenty. He's gonna do that entire road. He said, "We might have to even go down to gravel in some places." He said, "The road's literally falling apart." Yeah, he's, that road is, that's the first one they're gonna do this summer. And, uh, he's already told me that it's a must. He said, "To save that road, we gotta get on it at first opportunity."
They, they're just gonna tar the gravel there or we're gonna pave it?
We won't be able to pave it, it's a long stretch of road.
That's what I thought as well, that's what I thought.
But, but we're gonna do our best to fill in all the bad holes before we start paving and then, and pave that road as best we can with our equipment. It, it's literally falling apart. It's called something lane, but I can't remember the name of it. But I call it going over, it joins Milligan Street and it connects us back to, uh, two seventy-eight eventually.
Yeah, it splits and goes down two ways, down two seventy-eight.
Yeah. That road is in bad shape for us.
Probably been a long time since anybody's messed with it. Cause we used to play rabbit over there in cars and stuff, long time ago.
Mike's got that one moved at the top of the list. He said, "That's the first one we're gonna do anything to and we're gonna start paving this way." We, we really got a lot of work to do where our streets are concerned and...
Haven't had anything done for, how many years?
I, I plan to go begging for some more state money. There's a meeting in Tuscaloosa, uh, in February. Mr. Cooper's gonna be back down there and I'm gonna be back and ask for another dose of money. And, uh, we, we need the state's money put with ours. We're gonna get a little bit more with gasoline money, but we need some lump sum money. We need another two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars to do some additional paving. But if we can get a good grant from the state, I'd be for putting Grandview in cause it's, it really needs asphalt.
But it'd help, when you go to those meetings like that for him, if you make some pictures of what you're wanting to get the money for, the streets are so bad, cause some of those you're speaking at, if they saw the street, if they had him, I think it would help them to decide to give you some money to fix them.
First time Mike and I went, he said, "I'm not listening, boys." He said, "You didn't bring me any plans." He said, "Get your plans together." He said, "Get your plans together and come back to see me." So we went back and showed him the specific streets we wanted to work on. He said, "Now I'm listening." He said, "What have you got to put in it?" I said, "We don't have any." He said, "You'll have to come with some money or I'm not going to give you any." So that's when we got the two hundred thousand. He said, "We need to come with a plan to show you."
If you had two or three of those streets that's so bad, take care of them. Picture of it, you know.
We get to meet in Spike Brown's conference office. And Spike lives out here at Bethlehem and that doesn't hurt us any either.
No.
Mr. Cooper will listen a little more when it's somebody that knows where Hamilton is, you know. He, he's from down Montgomery or somewhere. Anyway, that's where his office is. He comes to these district offices occasionally. He was a accountant by training. Now he's become the DOT man. He's a numbers man. He, he likes, he likes to stay with numbers.
I think you got the numbers and pictures too.
Don't crowd the numbers.
Say, "You got the money, everybody's pictures."
We appreciate y'all being willing to come out and lead sessions. If you have any questions with Tyler, if you have any questions about other nodes. Ricky proposed the insurance. If you want a copy of the insurance plan, we'll get you some copies made. I don't know if you got a copy in your package today or not. Anyway, this is coming up. The total is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, some change. That might change a little bit if Ricky adjusts our regulations. So I'd be able to, I don't think it would change a lot. Not based on the numbers he gave us. We got three billion, three hundred thousand insurance for four thousand dollars. So if he adds another million or more to it, it'd be over probably a thousand dollar difference in the policy. It may not be that much anyway. I think we need a little more than we got. But he's doing some research on that right, right now. He's going to report back to us on the findings. I'll let y'all know about that as soon as I know. Hope everybody has a good holiday next month. We'll see y'all Tuesday if we don't see you.